It's being 7:00 PM. I'd like to welcome you all to a joint meeting of the Winthrop Town Council and Winthrop School Committee of March 10th, 2020, here in the Hobby Room. I'm going to ask Denise to please take a roll call of the members of the two committees.
Town Council, Councilor Jarrow.
Here.
Council Placat.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council LaConti.
Present.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Lotieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Here.
Okay, roll call, school committee. Brian Perrin.
Here.
Valentino Capobianco.
Here.
Gus Martucci.
Yes.
Jennifer Powell.
Present.
Suzanne Swope.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all please rise in the Pledge of the Leaders. I ask Council Jarrow to lead us in the Pledge of the Leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you shall remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. We've lost many people over the past week, but specifically, I want to point the great loss of Marilyn Planting, a chief's mother and wife of the former chief of our town. She was a first responder, wife and mother. I also want to recognize Yvette Donz, and I know that the school committee has already done that at the school committee meeting, but Yvette was the number-one fan of all Winthrop sports for so many years. And I've known her since she was in high school, and I don't think she ever missed a game up until the time she just got sick. And finally, Richard Milano, who was one of the founders of the Winthrop High School Hall of Fame, the Sports Hall of Fame. So for those three of them, please, let's take a minute of silence. We'll move right on to the election of a member of the school committee. There's been an opening on the school committee, and we've advertised for, I believe, at least a month or two to get people to send in their applications. And at this meeting, we are going to elect that person. So I would ask for nominations for that office.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Julie DeMarco Berry.
Okay, is there a second to that? All right, nomination by Tino Capobianco, seconded by Jennifer Powell, and that person, Julie Berry, are you here in the office?
Yes.
Do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to take the time to thank both the school committee and the town council members for taking the time to read my interest in the position, as well as those that took the time to personally speak with me. It was really an awesome opportunity to get to know each one of you individually, and I really look forward to working with both members, or all members of both committees, to move forward. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Any? Motion to be made to close?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it's unanimous. Congratulations, Julie, and I'll direct the clerk to cast a vote for Julie Berry's asked school committee person, and you'll have to go down to see Carla Battalini and get sworn in as soon as you can.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, you want to put in the roll call.
Council Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Abstain.
Abstain. Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Lotieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Brian Perrin.
Yes.
Valentino Capobianco.
Yes.
Gus Martucci.
Yes.
Jennifer Powell.
Yes.
Suzanne Swope.
Yes.
Congratulations.
As we're in a joint meeting, is there any other action that the school committee would like to bring before the council? Hearing none? The school committee can now be dismissed? Thank you for coming.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Berry, congratulations.
(laughing). I'm supposed to give your sister a kiss.
Yeah. I'm sure the line is going to be called about soon.
Since we already opened both meetings, I am going to ask that the court please read the minutes of the town council meeting of the last town council meeting of the...
Do you read the minutes? I have motion to approve the minutes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, to approve the minutes, I apologize. Is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Is there a second? Okay. Any additions? Any corrections? Any omissions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. All right. It takes me great pleasure at this time to make a presentation, and that presentation is to a dear friend, a person who has served the town of Winthrop for many, many years as chairman of the Conservation Committee, and he's with us tonight. And I'd like to read the citations, the town of Winthrop Town Council citation, which reads, "Vietnам to all that the town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to Norman Hyatt, Chairman of Conservation Committee. On behalf of the residents of the town of Winthrop, we extend our most sincere gratitude for your guidance on the Conservation Committee for the past several years. In wish you well on your resignation, we offer you nothing but the best in all of your future endeavors, given this 10th day of March, 2020, at Winthrop, Massachusetts, by Philip Arvone Curry, Town Council President, and Council Members Rich Farino, James Lotieri, Nick LaConti, Peter Christopher, Stephen Ruggiero, Tracy Honan, and Robert DeMarco." Norman, if you please come up here. (applause). Thank you, Bill. Absolutely. And I know you gave us up here. And I want to introduce his loving wife, Maxine, as well. Thank you. Thank you for letting him do it.
Press Council President Boncory and town councilors, thank you very much for this citation. I accept it in honor of all the Winthrop Conservation Commissioners who have served our town for the past 48 years, especially the late Mary Kelly, and also on behalf of our present Commission members who have worked tirelessly for the well-being of the town. Since 1972, when the Wetlands Protection Act, Chapter 131, Section 40, was put into law, the Commission has made determinations for thousands of projects within the wetland resource in Winthrop. For a small town of only 1.6 square land miles, we have 2,900 properties within our flood plain. We also have four beaches, a lake, a salt marsh, an island, three yacht clubs, three marinas, and 6.2 square miles of water for which the Conservation Commission is also responsible. The Winthrop Conservation Commission has worked diligently to move projects forward while fulfilling its obligations and mandates to protect the environment. All the permitting direct derivatives have to be approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection before permits can be issued. The Conservation Commission has always tried to keep aggressive changes in environmental policies, to act as a role model for other communities, and have also attended conferences, read innumerable scientific and technical articles, and met with experts to understand how climate change will affect our small peninsula. Although I appreciate the town council's recognition of my service to the Winthrop community, the awarding of this citation makes it even more difficult to comprehend the decision by our town manager not to replace the Winthrop Conservation Agent, but instead to share just one agent with both Chelsea and Revere. An agent working for three communities, two of which have major ongoing development projects, could not possibly meet all the demands of this position. Our very competent and efficient agent worked diligently for 18 hours a week for which he was contracted and could barely keep up with all that the job required. Moreover, the current commission, which consists solely of volunteers who have devoted many hours of their time ensuring that our environment is protected, is now being asked to assume many of the official responsibilities of the Conservation Agent. This ill-advised decision by the town manager not to fill this crucial position on our Conservation Commission was made without consultation or notification to the Commission. The Commission has been most disheartened by this turn of events, as Winthrop is currently more vulnerable than ever to weather and rising seas. It is my hope that this decision by the town manager will be reconsidered in reverse so that the Conservation Commission can continue to function effectively to protect our fragile environment as it has for the past 48 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Norman.
You're welcome.
And just to tell you that town manager has set up a meeting with the Conservation Committee, I believe, on the 12th, and that I will be attending that, and I invite any other councils that can attend it to also attend that.
That's good news. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, public comment. Is there any public comment? Jean.
Hi, Jean Madge, your precinct four. Five years ago and two and a half councils ago, we began a discussion about a dog park. Now, I know discussions about the dog park are still going on, but as I once said to Mike McDuffie, rest his soul, it took less time to write the Constitution of the United States than it is to get a dog park in this town. We talked about various areas. We had a wonderful group that was willing to work with the town. They raised some funds for the town, and we still don't have a dog park. I checked today with the town clerk. We have over 2,000 dogs in this town, and yet, at a meeting a few months ago, in less than 10 minutes, when a council requested a feasibility study for bike lanes, the council was willing to spend $25,000 to do that feasibility study. I think, and that's nothing against bike riders, so I don't want any threatening phone calls.
Yeah.
I think we need to rethink this. We need to get a dog park for our dogs and our people, because we have a wonderful group of people who have pets, and they need to have a place where they can go. It's good for the people, it's good for the pets. So let's get this dog park finished. Let's start putting it on the back burner. Get a place, get it done. It's about time. For five years, we've been working on this.
Jean, just for your information, we are working on a proposed site for a dog park. It's one of the priorities that this council gave to the town manager when we came in in January, and it is in the works. But that's all I can tell you right now, because it hasn't been voted by, you know, the committee that has the money to actually do the building. But there is a site picked, and it's being worked on.
I hope so.
Yes, and it should be soon. Okay. Any other public comment?
I would just like to...
Would you stand up and identify something?
Yeah, Gail Miller. I've spent many years working with Franzabella Marsh. I know a lot of you in the room, but I would just like to commend Norman Hyatt and obviously his predecessor, Mary Kelly, and these commissioners, the other commissioners, without whom this town would be gravely vulnerable if they didn't review all the projects that come before day in and day out for however many years. And we've worked closely with them forever and always relied on them for really giving a thorough review of the projects that were in wetlands. And I think going forward, I think you can't throw enough attention at those kinds of issues. So I hear maybe it's maybe, I don't know if it's a financial consideration, to chair commissioners or chair of commissioners, tri-communities, I don't know how you're going to fashion it, but I just think, you know, you're just leaving yourself very vulnerable to impacts to the town, and we are facing incredible challenges going forward. So, that's all. I'd like to again acknowledge Norman Hyatt and his commission.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, please?
Karen Chauves, precinct two. Before I start, yes, congratulations to Norman. I worked with him on the advisory committee many, many years ago, so we go back a few years.
And Norbert DeMarco.
Very recently, I did the early voting in town hall, and I, three of the days, two of the days, two of the three days, I did the late, I did the 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I noticed it is very dark coming in the front entrance of town hall. So I went out and I looked, and there's two wrought iron stands, I guess you call them. One has a big white glow on it, the other one has a naked light bulb hanging. Neither one of them will lit, and I guess I don't know why. And I don't know why this can't be looked at. It can't be, maybe it is a good project, I don't know, but I can't imagine that it's that big of a project that it can't be looked at and corrected. Also...
I see the town manager's taking notes, okay.
On the, just a question. On the new business, number 13B, E, and G, is that money that came in with that windfall from?
No.
It's not, okay? And again, I'll ask about the fire station. I know you said there was going to be a meeting set up and that it would be going forth. I just want to know, is everything still going forth with either the public safety building or the fire station?
The engineers were here today that are doing that K and B, and they will be back next Wednesday, next Tuesday.
Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning, we'll be meeting with them again.
And you're coming up with some sense.
So it is actually going forward, yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else under public comment?
Fireworks, 4th of July, 9:20. 4th of July is on a Saturday.
Okay. Are you making a pitch for money or?
No, not yet, but we retain, so keep making vacations, please.
Okay. Any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment. I was going to say, we received a communication from Mr. Hyatt with some information about the Wetlands Protection Program. I'm going to make that part of the minutes, so that it's recorded. Each council brought a copy of that. We're calling committee reports, first is appointments, commissioning committees.
Yeah, so we met last week, once again, going over the handbook and some of the changes. First off, we unanimously agreed that we, based on information that we learned, we were not going to be able to have the addition of being able to attend a subcommittee meeting remotely. So that passed three to nothing to change that language, to take that out. We also agreed as a committee, based on the current handbook online, the three of us were in agreement, and I don't know if this is something that we, how we present this, but we essentially believe at this point that the appointment of Ron Vecchia back in January is void at this point. We also talked about language adding to the handbook that would make it clear that the town council president would have the right to appoint the subcommittee chairs, and that language did not pass two to one. The updated changes that were, Stephen also added some changes that was voted and approved on also on a vote of two to one. That, the changes to that handbook, they are not available online. They were just received, I believe, today. So, you know, I saw that it's also under, you know, it's under old business, but until the public sees that, I don't think we should do anything about it until the 24th.
We'll proof that over till the 24th.
Yeah.
The whole book as amended to come forward, and we'll vote on it at that time. Please get it out so that people can see it before next Thursday at least.
Yep.
Okay. Public safety.
Public Safety Committee met on the 3rd. We had two major issues. One is we are looking into an alternative road in or out of the Gorman Fort Bank School. What we're considering is trying to get access to the public safety route that's in there between DPW and Bank Street. We are, we've tried to set up a meeting with Mr. LeBlanc at Governor's Park, and we're waiting to do that. After that, we have some other alternative plans to move forward on it, but first, we want to meet with Mr. LeBlanc. The second issue is crosswalk lights. I went around to check out what crosswalk lights were. Initially, I thought there were only two, one at Crest Avenue and Revere Street, and one at McGee's Corner, but I have since discovered that there is indeed one at Main Street and Pleasant Street, and one at Main Street and Herman Street. The one at Crest Avenue is timed so tightly, no senior or disabled person could safely get across the street in that time. The one at McGee's Corner is not working at all. The one at Herman Street is also very fast. You no sooner get it to turn on white so that you can cross than it immediately turns to orange to stop you. And the one at Pleasant Street is not working. Now, I've been told by the town manager that the ones at Pleasant Street and the one at Revere Street and Crest Avenue, they're both under plan to be redesigned, the whole intersection. And at that time, the crosswalk lights will be changed, and hopefully, they will be changed to audible lights, so our visually disabled people will be able to cross safely as well. We're waiting on that. Council DeMarco suggested that there might be a pilot test of a 3D crosswalk. This is a painted 3D crosswalk. We were informed that that would cost about $500, and we're looking into whether we can do that. That's about what we got.
Okay, thank you very much. Move on, skip to me.
Yep, we met last week as well to go over the topic of the town's fee schedule. So essentially, this is a pretty lengthy document that documents all of the different fees that individuals pay to the town for different permits and services that the town offers. So the, this is going to be a longer process than the one week it typically takes to get these out of committee, but the first step that the committee wanted to take was to highlight some areas that we thought could be improved, ask, and also ask department heads what the costs are associated with issuing these permits and enforcing it as well. So, and we also have had a previous intern at town hall look into this pretty recently, and they've compiled a recommended schedule that we're also going to look at. And so maybe we'll do some updates to that and then get through with it, but the committee wants to do a little bit deeper, a dive into how much, how much these services and permits are actually costing the town, and then come up with a sound recommendation for all of the fees. So we're going to be, we're not going to come out with a recommendation on that today, but, but we're going to be working towards that in the coming weeks.
You think it'll be ready on the 24th or?
I would say probably we'll take about two meetings, so not the 24th, but probably the one after that.
Okay, excellent. Millerfield Committee report.
Millerfield met last evening at the high school, and the majority of the meeting was around the fieldhouse and the completion of it. It is 95% complete. We have windows going in on the concession area this week. We have the bathroom, partitions being put up this week. Over the next week to two weeks, we'll have fencing coming in, a few small sections of fence that we have to finish up. We are set for a dedication on April 2nd to officially open the facility in the building, and I believe it's the night that coincides with spring sports beginning. We also discussed a shed at the golf course to replace the one we had to take down to reconfigure the field at the beginning of the project, and we feel, and we also discussed the vocational school and the students and how incredibly awesome they were this, this year from September on. We thought that they were going to be there about six to seven weeks in September, just to finish out some stuff, and they ended up staying most of the year, most of the semester, and went way beyond what we had anticipated them doing. They did a lot of finish work, and they did a fantastic job. So extremely grateful to, speaking to Leo for beginning that way back when. The money they saved us was fantastic. It was upwards of $300,000 to $400,000 in labor cost, and their work is truly appreciated, and we hope to have an event for the vocational kids later as well to thank them, to give them proper thanks. But everything else is going well with the field.
Okay, any report from any other committees, the joint committee?
No.
None, okay. All right, move on to the town manager's report.
Great, thank you. First thing that I wanted to note, and this is just out of an overabundance of caution, there's a chance that my budget presentation on the 24th may be done in a different format than holding a large public meeting. That is to be determined at this point, but we are exploring options with that. With that said, I actually wanted to cede my time this week to give my public health director, Meredith Hurley, as well as our public safety chiefs, the ability to answer questions concerning our local attention to coronavirus-related items. It's what we went over in staff today. It's important, and we're paying attention to it, so Meredith did a very nice little couple of minute, kind of where we stand right now, update in the staff meeting, which if she would be so kind to give that now, it would be great. And then, if there are questions, feel free to ask with the individuals here.
I just want to say that the governor did call the state of emergency for Massachusetts today. I want to thank Meredith for the work she's already been doing with the school committee and getting a letter out to the parents on coronavirus. And if you want our website, there's also a handwritten memorandum on how to stay clean, how to avoid getting coronavirus. And I think that was also by Meredith, so please, tell us what's going on.
So, so thank you. Thank you for having us. This is a great avenue to get out some good information, get out the proper information, which is what our focus is, is to make sure that we're getting correct information to as many people as possible on this, because there's been so much concern in the community, so much confusion, primarily because as this situation evolved, and it evolved very quickly, there was changes in guidance along the way, and it's being tasked on local health to handle a lot of this. So, that being said, we've done our due diligence for planning up to this point. What we're doing is we're kind of modifying our pandemic influenza planning and modifying it to fit coronavirus. They fit very closely together. So we've talked with DPH, I'm in constant communication with DPH, constantly monitoring CDC sites. I started monitoring coronavirus activity probably mid-January through New England Journal of Medicine and other public health journals to kind of see what it was looking like in other parts of the country, because we are such a global, public health is so global that it eventually comes our way. So that being said, in the last 10 days, it's really ramped up, particularly here in Massachusetts, despite even having one positive case a few weeks back, but now we're seeing market increases. What is a little bit different is that, you know, whereas we were watching, we were most concerned about people that travel to the five high-risk countries, and then secondary to that was anybody that attended a cluster meeting at, in Boston, now there is some, some cases that are being reported and called community acquired. So what we've done, and we've been in constant communication, police, fire, public health, schools, town manager, multiple times a day, we're communicating with DPH on a daily basis, and we're getting a lot of our... So what we've done, and we've been in constant communication, police, fire, public health, schools, town manager, multiple times a day. We're communicating with DPH on a daily basis and we're getting a lot of our guidance from DPH, from CDC, from our top organizations. And it's all kind of the same guidelines, we're just trying to simplify it for the message for people as they have questions and trying to get ahead of any of the questions. We've gone through quite a few different scenarios to plan for if this happens, what, what do we do? If this happens, what do we do? And we just keep on talking through it and talking through it and, and putting in place what we can do currently. That being said, it's not like, it's an evolving process and we just keep kind of watching it and waiting to see what will happen. I've reached out to area medical facilities, Dr. Pransky's office, we've talked about what they're doing, they're getting great guidance through their upper organizations. I have another conference call with DPH tomorrow, there's one scheduled for today, but in light of the emergency declaration, they postponed it until tomorrow. The emergency declaration for us will do nothing but really release a lot of resources very quickly, which is what we're looking for. So that's a benefit for local health. Currently, they are not tasking local health with monitoring anybody that traveled like they have in other situations, so, but again, that can be something that changes very quickly. Public schools are very much on top of this. They did a really strong deep clean over the weekend, which was nice that they were able to schedule it over the weekend and didn't have to dismiss schools or, you know, disrupt that kind of, of scheduling for the kids. I've been in contact with council on aging. I know that the MRC, Jean Maggio, has been in touch with public housing. So we're trying to reach out to like all of these different sectors so that we're all on the same page and we're all getting the same information and we're pushing it out as, as best as possible.
Did all the schools get deep cleaned?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yep, they did.
Do you get any, do we have the test kits?
No, they wouldn't come to local health just yet, the way that folks are being tested. So the way that it's working is they're encouraging people, a lot of the primary care physicians are not having people go into their office. So if they've traveled to one of the five countries and are showing symptoms, they say self-quarantine for 14 days. If you get worse and you need medical attention, go to the emergency room. So that's where the healthcare organizations have already banded together and so they're cycling people into emergency rooms. There, they need to get appropriated to be tested. Just, I want to say yesterday, they got an influx of the testing kits. Prior to that, they, they didn't have very many in the state, but now they have quite a few, so they're kind of covered. They're seeing a cluster out in Berkshire County, so they're being kind of siphoned that way. So, but what a lot of medical doctors are doing is that they're, they're testing for flu to rule, either rule in flu or rule out flu. So if somebody, because we are still seeing an active flu. So I think I had six, six reports of flu this week alone, which is kind of late in the season. We're hoping that the warm weather will, you know, quash it now. So the protocol right now is that people are being tested for flu. If they rule in positive for flu, then they're, they're flu case. If they then rule out for flu and they're continuing to have symptoms and the risk assessment shows that they could be potential for a coronavirus, then they get tested. And they get tested, they can be tested in the doctor, but then it goes to mass DPH and then it's presumptive and then it needs another 24 hours at the CDC. So we're talking about 72 hours before a confirmed positive. So what's confusing this too is that we're still learning about the transmission pattern, so we don't know 100% about whether or not somebody who's asymptomatic can then pass it on. We know that, we know the means of transmission, we just don't know the specific times. So as that evolves, it'll give us some better guidance, it's a little bit of a gray area.
So just on the law enforcement side, myself and Chief Linnegan talk about, you find it six times a day about what's going on and what's our next steps. Each agency, I think, is different and unique. So we've put out a memo this afternoon on personal protection and best practices for law enforcement officers that come in to contact the person who has flu-like symptoms. Medical aides that the fighter responding to, the police, law enforcement is backing off medical aides and maintaining outside, worrying about traffic while the fighter poppin' EMS handles those medical aides. We also have to worry about our booking procedures and what's the best practices to identify anyone who's coming into the facility. We're working on that with the Suffolk County Sheriff. He's going to be coming out of his audit tomorrow morning, we're in contact with them to find out what intake questions are they changing, which ones that they're asking, which was highlighted by sending the memo to my lieutenants and a train belonging to my lieutenants, one of the lieutenants, Nancy Darrow, who came up and said, what about the booking procedures? So we now start and look at those. You know, sudden death procedures also would have to change dispatch under the direction of Chief Linnegan. Are asking specific questions on medical aides, we've asked them now to ask those specific questions on sudden deaths, whether the person has been out of the country or come into contact with anyone out of the country. So those sudden death protocols will be in place that we would actually use precautions, person protecting precautions before entering the sudden death to investigate the sudden death. Our policies and practices are consistent with that at the state police, in the state medical examiner's office. If there is a suspicion of the virus in the person who is deceased, the ME's office will come out and do the testing before anyone is transported anywhere onsite. So that has already changed as a protocol. Our detectives have been up to date with this memo to make sure they're using the same precautions and protocols. You know, I think the town manager and the assistant town manager are on top of the employment side of this. We're worrying about the public safety side of this and how it affects our employees. But, you know, there's a lot of other things to worry about that they're working through on the employment side is whether, you know, what do we do with an employee who comes into contact, what do you do with an employee who comes down with it and that type of stuff. So we're still working through some of those questions and I'm sure they'll have answers for us probably tomorrow.
And on our end, where we're responding, we were actually going to tweak, we have a meeting with our ambulance on Thursday morning that we are going to change how we operate. We did put questions out, as we know, as you know, the calls going to the emergency center now over in Revere and they'll ask further questions, have you been out of the country, especially for people who are general illness, I'm coughing, I'm running a fever. The way ours will be tweaked after Thursday will be ambulance and fire will meet out in front of a given residence who will triage, we're not going to send everybody in based on a report that's suspicious. And we will direct them if they're not an at-risk population or if someone is presenting coughing, high fever, then they add, well, I'm having chest pains to them, we're going to have to transport them. The problem is we have two dedicated ambulances in Winterport and one becomes occupied, a third ambulance comes in. But what's added now is these ambulances are going to have to be decontaminated and everything else. So that is a problem, but we are addressing it as this evolves. The other thing is we've been passing papers around for continuity of government, who is key personnel in your department, who is next in line? And we're updating names, we have a lot of new faces in government. And again, with the counselor, the council, we heard Councilor DiMarco say tonight, well, it isn't in the handbook, we can't remotely go into a meeting. So this council too, in the event that things got to the point that we needed people to vote, whether it was a funding issue or anything else that would be pertinent to continuity of government, you would have to come up with some way changing your handbook, how do you do it without a quorum? Who has the authority to do that vote? So these are all things that are coming to light that we need to address. If not for this, outbreak for the next. I think we have something in the charter that gives us a seven-day opportunity to act, you know, and then get it resolved after.
Sorry, excuse me. So we are trying to look at this from every angle, expanding on what Chief Linnegan was talking about. We're talking to KP about what are the frequently asked questions in the space right now, if they have recommendations of how we should be communicating with our employees. We're looking at, was it CDC guidelines about compensating employees concerning sick time and things like that. This is unknown territory a little bit that we're in. And we're just talking to the same individuals that we would in any unique circumstance and we're just going through our process of figuring out how to best keep the public safe, how to continue the continuity of government and ensuring that you all have the ability to vote on matters in the case that you need to in a different sort of fashion. And also just trying to make sure that the community feels informed about this. So I'm doing stuff with some of the electeds from the area on Thursday that I'm going to bring Meredith and the assistant public health director and the assistant town manager to. You know, it's, we're all kind of learning every day more about it and learning about the intervening measures that we can provide at a local government. As a local government, it's difficult because this is like the front page of every paper and the first thing that you see on the news is like a national problem and a world problem. But we are as much as possible looking at this as a local problem to figure out how we can kind of quell fears and pass out information as like easy to digest as possible, but then also laying facts kind of bare as we see them. There's no, we really have reasons for hyperbole with this stuff. We're just trying to keep people informed about it and help people act in a rational manner as much as possible. And we will continue providing updates from my office and for public health and safety as we have additional information.
Yeah, and we can, Chief Linnegan.
I threw this off.
We, we're planning on using the website, people can go to the town website as much as possible, then call my office. We're trying to push it out on Facebook and Twitter. You know, if something gets posted on the website, we're posting it on Facebook, we're posting it on Twitter, any other mechanism that we can think of. We're trying about using C-click Fix to push out notifications, we could always use.
We will.
Yeah, so we're investigating as this goes on, the best source is to get out as much information as possible so that people are informed.
I think it's just to, to reiterate the obvious, that everyone has responsibility in stopping the spread of any virus, of flu-like, of flu, and just by washing your hands and washing with hot water and, and continue making sure your kids do it. It's very important. And, you know, and that sometimes you have to suspend visitation to grandparents because of the, of the spread of the flu or of the virus. So everyone should be participating and trying to keep our community safe. The easiest way to do that is just making sure that we wash our hands, keep the six-foot rule in place, you know, stop hugging people and I tell my officers, you know, stop shaking hands with the firefighters and the EMS workers because we, you know, they're inside working with people, they come out, we always say eye each other, we're so used to just shaking each other's hand and in this type of situation, that's not good, that's not a good practice.
Great point.
Do you need anything right now? I noticed walking around today, there's no hand sanitizer solution around, any of that. Do you need any money right now? Do we need any emergency appropriations?
We don't need any emergency pro, motions right now.
It's hard to get this.
If you can find hand sanitizer, tell us where and buy it. Like it's, you can't order it through our normal procurement efforts, so.
I did see online on the CDC website, you can make your own sanitizer using bleach. You can also make, you know, hand sanitizer as well as surface disinfectant, simple recipes and things that I think you can still maybe get at CVS.
Okay, that's great.
I was surprised that I didn't see sanitizer in here when I came in.
Yeah, I was too.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah.
So a lot of municipal governments are pushing more in the no-contact direction because we, a lot of us don't have the hand sanit, the, the stuff in the bathrooms, the stuff in the public spaces as much as we would like to in like the private industry type of spaces. We don't have that, so it's a lot more of the stop shaking hands, do the elbow taps or whatever type of thing.
And that's, that's reasonable, I understand that completely. But I mean, in a situation like this where I'm passing papers to him and we're all, we're all working, it's, you know, it's kind of hard, you know?
It's very understandable and that's also stuff that we're doing research into. Yeah, unfortunately.
Anything, anyone else have any questions for the town manager's report?
In regards to the, the dispatch center, have they changed any of their protocol in order to identify if these, if these symptoms are something that somebody's dealing with before you guys go in and, and see what the problem is?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll give us a heads up, use precautions, just to give us a heads up. And at that point, we'll meet in front of the building with the EMS crew and, you know, you don't need five people in there. And again, we, most people are directed to call their, their, their family physician. The emergency rooms don't want you and there's no need of you going there. You know, most likely if you're healthy, you are going to recover. It's crazy to send everybody to the emergency room, you got all those people there infecting the whole hospital.
We've done, we've done a deep clean of all the schools. I was wondering, have we looked into doing a deep clean of the senior center as well? Because I know that they have events there, I mean, I just got an event for Eagle Scout. Has that been looked at or done?
Yep, they've started doing their deeper cleans over at the, at the senior center because that's definitely a population that I think is most nervous around this.
Yeah, okay, good.
And it is also the DPW director has been advised by us on the best practices from the CDC standpoint on the general government buildings as well.
Okay, can you get public comment?
Yeah, on the housing, when I talked to Peggy, they're doing the best that they can with the staff they have, especially after the voting, they did a deep cleaning of the common areas, things like that, where a lot of people went in. They're trying to do some of the buildings, you know, handrails, doorknobs, things like that. They can only do so much with the staff that they have, so, but they are trying.
In regards to, I know a lot of communities are considering canceling large gatherings and whatnot. Do we have any sense of where the virus, or the point that the virus would need to spread before we would start scaling back on any of these gatherings that we would, that the town might potentially be having?
I think it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. The school department is obviously through the superintendent's office is basically judgment calls based on risk factors. I know the superintendents across the Commonwealth is in conversation with each other constantly every day about that and they have a matrix on what they will allow and what they won't allow. So on the town side, I know the town manager mentioned that our meeting today, that he's exploring different options until they bring messages to people because they, we might come to that point where we would have to cancel large congregations of people. We're hoping, you know, that it's, we don't have to do that, it's something we don't want to do. We just seen South Boston Lawrence all canceling the St. Patrick's Day parade and everything else, so it might be necessary.
One of our concerns, our next meeting is going to be the forum in the big auditorium with potential of having a lot of people there. So we'd like to keep abreast as to whether we should have that and I'm looking that we should have it, but if we have some kind of notice that we need to cancel, we'd like to let it know ahead of time.
It's a big problem for a lot of communities that have town meetings trying to pass budgets.
Yeah, I don't see any real immediate threat right here in Winterport, so I think we're at a low risk, but, you know, there is a risk out there.
And we're watching our neighboring communities because if it's on our borders, then the likelihood of it coming here would be, would be greater, which would then expedite the decision-making process.
Okay. Keep your eye on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the total report? School committee report. School committee had a meeting on March 2nd of 2020. And at that, at that meeting, basically it was discussions of the budget, they're preparing their budget to, to bring forward to the town manager and the council for our vote. They did pass a motion to increase the for our vote. They did pass a motion to increase the price of the preschool. And it's basically, I think it was about a $200 increase in most instances, maybe a $100 or $200 increase. And they claimed they needed that increase for preschool because it hasn't been raised in five years. And expenses are going up. The only other thing was they had to close the slide at the Gorman Fort Bank School because it was broken and the safety hazard. So they closed the slide at that school. And they'll probably be looking to repair that slide. That may be coming before us soon. As I said, the, the park here at the Gorman School will be ready before the end of the year. Lisa Superintendent has been putting together a list of things that they need to finish the school project because the school building assistance committee is now back in session and meeting and working on getting that complete package finalized. So Lisa is doing a great job in putting out what they need to purchase for the school. So it'll be up to park. Okay? And that's the school department update. So we'll move to old business. And the first item on old business is the committee handbook. And we've already decided we're gonna put that off till the 24th meeting. The second item is the Fort Bank Access Road. Do you have anything you want to say on that yet?
The meeting with Mr. LeBlanc, has it been set yet?
Okay. And also on old business is the town fee schedule and that is we are putting that over for at least the next meeting and maybe the next one. Okay. On the new business, a motion by, I believe, Councilor Farino, is a motion to reduce the town's speed limit to 20 miles per hour or take any other action thereon.
Would you like to make that motion, Council President?
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second to hear it.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilor Farino and seconded by Councilor Damaco to reduce the town's speed limit to 20 miles per hour.
I'd like to refer it to the TSAC for further study.
Okay. Is there anyone more to discuss before that?
I, I, I think that speed is a problem in Winthrop in terms of how people drive. I saw this and, you know, reducing the, the town's speed limit, I think is a good idea. I don't think it would be enforced on Route 145 going out to Deer Island. I don't think that, I think that's out of our jurisdiction if I'm not mistaken. I don't know about that for sure. But to be honest with you, Rich, I think 20 is a little too low. I think 25 would probably be a, a sweetest spot for me that I could get behind.
Well, I mean, that's why I was referring it to TSAC. If they come up with a recommendation and come back to 25, I'd entertain that. This is basically from a constituent, a couple constituents over the last, let's say, six months, we did reduce the speed limit to 30. And to their avail, and to mine too, it hasn't had much of an effect on the reducing of speed. With a lot of things changing, a lot more deliveries, you know, Amazon and UPS double parking, people just aren't slowing down. And the enforcement end of it, police and officers do a wonderful job, but they have a lot of other things on their plate. And we're not fully staffed with police department either. Not that I'm saying that that's a reason, but it's hard to have people out there with guns and, you know, doing routine stops for speeding. It just doesn't happen the way it should. We've had some serious accidents on Pleasant Street and different matters. And the speed limit was reduced. You know, so, you know, my constituents and these people that have, you know, asked me to present this, you know, it's, it's well worth looking at. And I do agree. People aren't slowing down. I walk my dog every night. They fly down 145 like it's a raceway down Washington Avenue, Pleasant Street. It's a lot more people walking, a lot more people with dogs. There's 2,000 dogs in the town. And, you know, people walk their dogs, you know, and one quick pothole, you turn and you could hit someone. I mean, it's just, it's really to the point where, you know, something needs to be looked at. And I think it's worth TSAC doing it and that we're climbing.
Any, any other discussion? Counsel?
I, I do agree. There's a speeding problem in town. I do think as well, 20 is too low. I'm wondering though, if, if 30, if reducing the speed limit to 30 didn't work, why do we think that reducing it further will work? I'm not against reducing it further to say 25. I think enforcement is key. I know we're, we're, don't have maybe the capacity to enforce it as we'd like to, but I think enforcement is what would reduce speeding. You know, if people were actually ticketed, I, I can't, I, I can't think of anybody ever complaining that they've issued a speeding ticket in the town of Winthrop. But I see people speeding every day. I live on Pleasant Street. It's, I think enforcement is the problem. I agree. I don't know how that would, what else we could do if, if we just don't have the resources to enforce it.
Just for information, in the last council, deprived of this administration, we passed a reduction on the speed limit from Del Beach Corner to Deer Island and back. We made it to 25 miles an hour. And that was increased. It took us months to get the signs up after we put it. And I still haven't seen any speed traps there to catch anybody speeding because I see people coming out of there at 3:00 in the afternoon and they're flying down Shirley Street near where the York Club is and Euro Beach is. But it is enforcement. But I think we should, this is a motion that's been put up and seconded. We had a problem when we, when we did pass that motion, that we couldn't do it on the state road, which is 145. That's why we just did it from Del Beach Corner up to Deer Island. And we couldn't, and that's not part of 145. 145 turns back at Del Beach Corner. But that can be done as well to reduce it. But to reduce, you're gonna get state approval. You have to have a traffic study. The traffic study costs a ton of money, which we don't have the money to do that traffic study. If the state didn't do the traffic study, it would probably not be able to be done at all. But I am gonna suggest that we send this to the Traffic Safety Committee with them to report back to the Rules and Orders Committee. Because if there is a change in bylaws in reducing the speed, it gotta go back to the Rules and Orders Committee to do that. So I will entertain your motion to send it to Task Committee to investigate and report back to the Rules and Orders Committee?
Thank you.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to Rich's motion?
Something I want to mention.
Let me get a second and then we can have a discussion.
I'll second.
The speeding is not just a Winthrop problem. It's a state and nationwide problem. And the only thing I've ever seen that really worked was that light they put out on Revere Street where it flashed what your speed was. People slowed down immediately for that. It made a huge difference in that stretch. So I'd like to see more of those things to slow the speed down.
Well, maybe that recommendation could go over to TSAC as well. I don't know what those cost. And I think we only have one.
We only, I, we may have two.
We can continue to ask for those types of signs.
Just one thing I wanted to add. The city of Boston reduced the speed limit all through the city. And a lot of those roads were state. And they did it anyways. And there was no repercussions for that. So I just want to say that.
For people also.
That, that, that isn't a real reason not to reduce them anyway.
I can't, I was told by the town manager, he said, do it anyways. So, most of the main second and send it to TSAC with them to refer the investigation back to Rules and Orders. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried.
So ordered.
All right. I have two appointments, and that is to the School Building Committee. And they are Richard Tofoni and Brian Curley. Richard is the head of the facilities for the town of Winthrop. And he was inadvertently left off because we had put on the facilities director for the school. But both facilities directors should be on. So I'd like to make that appointment. And Brian Curley is the middle school principal. We had put the high school principal on. And I think since it's a building includes both high school and middle school, that both principals should be on. So I am appointing Richard Tofoni and Brian Curley to the School Business Assistance Committee. Motion to accept that appointment?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Flack. Seconded by Councilor Terry to accept those appointments. Any discussion?
Does this, would Richard or Brian, would that take anybody off the school business?
No, no. It's just added to. Okay? And it's a very large committee already, so it's crowded. But any, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. They are appointed. They'll be notified to get sworn in. On the new business, we have a motion. These are not coming out of finance, are they?
No, going to.
Okay, they're going to. All right. We have a motion to authorize $40,663 for the lease slash purchase and equipping of a new F-750 dump truck for the Department of Public Works.
Council President?
Yes.
Just for clarification, these three items that we had previously approved, we approved them as we were doing the budget, and then we approved the transfers at, in July after the, after the fiscal year started. These are leases to purchase, so it's more of a clerical thing than anything else. This is already money that's been put aside and voted on. But it will go to finance and come back. But that's what these three items are for.
Why would it have to be voted in Ken if we already voted?
If I could ask this, Anna, to.
So when these, these three vehicles are in the FY20 category, lease purchase, so when we, when the council, the previous council took the vote, when we, when the budget was approved in June of last year, the, we, in our process of finalizing the paperwork for the dump truck, it became known that we had not included some specific language that a recent change in the Mass General laws requires for a lease to purchase. The language is to specify the specific lease purchase and the term for the lease purchase. And so the language that was previously voted didn't have that term in there. And so in order for us to finalize that paperwork, it's just a technical fix of reauthorizing the lease purchase for the specific amount of years. The funds have already been duly appropriated and that was all done properly in terms of the transfer and the appropriation. But for us, we have the, we have the finances, but we can't finalize the paperwork for the specific lease purchase until the, until the council votes on that specific language.
Okay. So can we take these all as one motion?
I think we can take them as one motion. They just have to be advertised.
Yeah, I think they would need to be read.
Well, we're not gonna vote on them. Take them one motion to refer.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
They technically, they, the change in the state law considers them more like long authorizations because they're lease purchase, which they weren't previously considered. So they would, they will need a two-thirds vote when they are formally authorized. I don't know if that matters for referring or if they have to be referred eventually or not.
When they, when they come back from the Finance Committee, they'll be.
Be a roll call vote.
Written correctly, there'll be a roll call vote because they're over 25,000 and so on. But to refer them to the Appointments Committee, I think I'd like to take them all as a vote to refer. And I will read them. 13D, Town Council vote to authorize $40,663 for the lease purchase and equipment of a new F-750 dump truck for the Department of Public Works. 13E, Town Council vote to authorize $42,214 for the lease purchase and equipment of a new John Deere 544K front-end loader for the Department of Public Works. 13F, Town Council vote to transfer $35,400 from the Special Revenue Fund 520 Technology Grant to fund the second year of a three-year software agreement.
That's a different, that's a different.
That's a separate one?
Yeah.
All right, so.
But you could do 13G.
13G, Town Council vote to authorize $26,225 for the lease purchase and equipment of a new John Deere backhoe for the Department of Public Works. And of course, when the motions come back, we'll have the right account numbers and so on report. So I'm, the motion is to send 13D, E, and G to the.
Refer to Finance.
Finance Committee.
Motion to refer.
Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote in so ordered. Now, 13F is a separate motion, Council to vote to transfer $35,400 from Special Revenue Fund Technology Grant to fund the second year of a three-year software agreement with Open Gov. Is there a motion, send that to Finance?
Motion to refer to Finance.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So all four of those will go to the Finance Committee for a report back at our next meeting, which will be on the 24th at the Senior Center at 6:00 PM. Oh, it's going to the high school auditorium? Yeah, we moved that to the high school auditorium at 6:00 PM, which will be followed right now by a forum at 7:00 PM. Is there any public comment? Being the only public group. All right. Public relations, upcoming events is, there is going to be a public meeting on March 12th at the DeLeo Senior Center. And that is on the Center Business District Infrastructure. The contractor will be here to answer questions, to lay out what is going on as far as phasing and so on. And the entire town is invited to be there. What time is it? I believe it is 6:00.
Okay. Yeah. And we also have the website on the front page of our town website concerning the Center Business District Infrastructure Project. It has a timeline of the phasing. We will continue to push out information about this. But for any concerned individuals, please come on Thursday. And if you can't come, please send us in your questions and we will make sure to attend to them.
Yes. Did you want to mention what we discussed earlier about the repurposing of any?
Sure. So there are items in French Square that can potentially be repurposed that I'm going to have a managers committee look into the potential repurposing of those. Whether there are groups in town that would like to potentially take over ownership of said items, or if we're going to have the town explore the restoration of certain items associated with French Square.
Yep. All right. Any other business to come before the Town Council? Anybody else have any comments or events that they want to talk about? Hearing none. I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
By Councilor Terry, seconded by.
Second.
Councilor Damaco. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.